Twenty, approving an interlocal agreement with Utah County for the file line.
Mayor and Council, this one is for the legal department. I do a lot of stuff for other departments, but this one is for us. We have a case management software that is ending. It's going to go dark July 1st, so we need a new one. And we, we contract right now with, with Utah County, Springville and Payson, and the county is switching the provider to a different software. And we need to have an interlocal agreement with the county and these other cities to, to share those costs, and they're based on our caseload. So our case, so the cost is basically the same, except there is a one-time fee of, to migrate the data from the old software to the new software. And this is a case management that is really necessary for our prosecutors to keep all our cases straight and tracking. So I recommend you approve the interlocal agreement with Utah County.
Any questions? I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve twenty-one dash twenty, approving an, an interlocal agreement with Utah County for file line prosecution case management software.
A motion by Councilman Scobes.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Three eleven, agreement with ATNT.
We just do a motion to approve?
There he is.
Why, you made it in the nick of time. I didn't try to do that.
So, the, the item on your agenda tonight is an agreement with ATNT to establish three-one-one with them. So I just wanted to give a brief history because we'll see some more agreements that'll come on, in consent as we get those other agreements with carriers. So what is three-one-one? The number three-one-one, it's an abbreviated dialing code similar to four-one-one, eight-one-one, or nine-one-one, created by the FCC in nineteen ninety-seven as a non-emergency number reserved for municipalities. So, we are in our lane to use this. It's to do service requests, like a missed garbage can or an issue in the street, any non-emergency number, or just to ask some questions that you may have throughout the city. So, if you're within the city boundaries, you can call three-one-one. It's geographically based, and you call that number instead of dialing eight oh one, eight oh four, forty-five-hundred, which although is easy to remember, it's, that's still a ten-digit number. So, if you're in the city and you call three-one-one, you'll get the city number. Once we have these agreements in place with all of the carriers. So, each phone carrier or provider has to have in place the system to set it up where if you to call three-one-one, they will transfer it to our termination number. So, the ATNT one is the first one that's ready. And on your agenda tonight, this starts a six-month timeline for them to get this ready. So if you have ATNT as your network, within the next six months, you'll be able to call three-one-one and get ahold of our utility office to get any questions answered. We're still working with, with the other phone providers to get, you know, their agreements and to get that number for them, and continuing to work on our implementation plan as to, you know, if we have a, a call center or what other individuals would take these calls. We anticipate that we might get some more calls through three-one-one because it's a lot easier. It remains one of those barriers to maybe get an answer to a question. So, with that said, staff recommends approval of the ATNT agreement.
Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve three-one-one agreement with American Telephone and Telegraph.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal.
What was that again?
That's old school.
ATNT.
Well, I know, but I-
American Telephone and Telegraph.
Oh.
We still have telegrams.
Was that too, so?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget. Ooh, thank you. Kind of like a bad cold.
Not that I'm bored.
Thank you.
Standing up to take my place.
I think I ordered the wrong thing. Can you go get me something different? Just kidding. Do you know what a reviver is? Is it a reviver, an energy drink?
Blue paper.
That's one.
So this is next year's budget. We've had, we had the budget presented the first meeting in May. We've went a month for public input. We've had a public hearing last council meeting, and tonight is the adoption of the budget for next year. It will begin on July 1st. Since the original budget was presented, it's been on the city website that the public could view. If you turn to page one, this kind of summarizes what changed since that very first document. And we'll implement these into the new document and put the new, new document on the city's webpage next, the next week or so. So you can see that the general fund only changed slightly, while the enterprise funds changed about a million seven. Most of that is for two substation transformers that we need to start the order process in order to start to get those maybe in a year from now. But we need to have some down payments and stuff paid out of this budget. So those items were not in the original budget, and that's why it's increased the one point seven million in the enterprise fund, but it's in the electric fund is where that's at. So, in essence of that, there's not any changes material from, where some cleanup in the employee tab as far as employees that have been hired or some that have left. So we've tried to update the employee tab as far as for the, the personnel. Other than that, it's, it's the same document that was presented in first of May, except for a couple of small minor changes. The material one was in the electric department. So with that, if you have any questions, it's not a public hearing today. I'm just letting you know where the budget is. The new budget will be presented and submitted to the state auditor within thirty days of tonight, of when it's gets, if it gets adopted tonight. We have thirty days to send it to the state auditor and have it on our, um, city website. One last item, I was able to receive. We, we've had certified tax rates in the prior years, talking about holding the rate, raising the rate, a little bit like that. We did those last year, last August, we had public hearing meetings to raise the certified tax rate in order to build the library, and we did it to build the fire station also. I just received the impact of the values. I think it'd be interesting for councils to know, and for those that are home. Our community, when your home goes up in value, which I'm sure everybody's homes went up this past year, you think, oh, I'm going to have to pay more property tax because my house value went up. The way the state law's written for property tax is called truth in taxation, is once the city has decided, or has taxed your house for a certain dollar amount, or the taxing entities, we cannot collect any more dollars from that piece of property without a public hearing. And so if your value goes up, I can still only collect that certain dollar amount from you, and as an aggregate for the whole city, it forces that rate down. And so in prior years, we said, let's hold the rate to capture that property tax to be, to be used. This year, we're not holding the rate, so the rate is going to fall because most houses and most property had an increase. So last year, our certified tax rate was, I'm going to use the number twelve. So point zero zero one two is what our city's share of that pie of property tax. With the increase in value that it went, it's now dropping, so our certified tax rate for the city is now eleven-twenty-nine for this next year, for the year we're in right now. But there's more, more houses and more businesses that are, that are coming to town and that have built. So if a new house is built, we as the city and the school district gets to capture the property tax, but we're going to apply eleven-twenty-nine to that house, not twelve like we did last year. So we're going to apply eleven-twenty-nine in, as a certified rate to capture that. So with that, our property tax revenue is increasing because of new growth, not because of your raising the, the property tax rate because it's actually declining, but all of the new growth in town and our property tax revenue will increase about a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars just on new growth of homes and businesses that have been built in Spanish Fork this, for this next year. So that's just an update as far as our property tax, that the, there is not a property tax increase, but the rate did decrease with the sheriff's budget. So that's what I have. Not a public hearing, just to approve the budget for, and the total amount is one point, let's see, a hundred and seventy-two million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand and fifty-one dollars is what the total budget is.
Great. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's adjourn.
To adjourn to RDA.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're in RDA.
If we have them, I don't know if we have any minutes. Before we, before we do the RDA, it's nine-thirty. Do you mind if we pause for a moment and do a couple of things?
Yes.
Do you want us to go back into city council?
Doesn't matter. Yeah, yeah, let's go back to city council. That way it's, these aren't on the minutes for the RDA.
Okay. I move we go back into city council.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're back in city council. Tyler, it's all yours.
I'll be back.
Oh, I've heard that before.
Aren't we taking a commercial break?
Yeah, I think it might be good for you guys to, does anybody need to take a? That was a quick nod. Okay, let's take a quick moment.
Thanks for the drink, but that didn't help the problem, so.
Two minutes.
Okay.
Two minutes.
Two minutes. You back on? Everybody happy? You're back? Okay, let's go. Tyler, we'll turn it over to you.
All right. Well, we decided to change the agenda a little bit so that Kier's wonderful wife, Robin, could hopefully get a little bit of sleep tonight, as Kier might be here a while. But we, we, as the city, the, the administration policy allows for us to give a service award at the end of someone's career of service here. And as everybody knows at home already, Kier's service has come to at least, I guess, a short, hopefully just a, a short rest. Maybe in the future, he'll be back. But Robin was nice enough to take Kier on a date a couple of weeks back to her favorite place, the PGA Superstore.
Oh, bless your heart.
I don't know.
And I thought honestly, like, you know, I just don't want to go home to those kids. Is there any way that we can just go, you'll think it's fun, but I just.
So, she said that you had, you had your best date ever, and she had. Yeah, she was born stiff. But speaking of stiff, these are stiff, I think Firm Flex clubs, because that's what she said you swung and liked. So we got you a couple of clubs for your bag, and we know you love Spanish Fork swag. So each one of these, when you're out playing in DC or wherever it might be, will have the Oaks. You'll be representing Spanish Fork City. So, Kier, these are for you, and they should be the clubs that you hoped for. We're grateful for Jansen at the golf course and Ryan for helping us out with these. And then there's another little something for you. So try not to use these until the morning probably. I wouldn't recommend teeing up on Main Street, so.
No.
So you only get to take home either the clubs or the basket.
You choose.
Well, Cheryl gave that to Robin.
Nice loophole.
Really, thanks to Robin for being such a trooper. She wants out. She wants to go home now. Super trooper there. When, when Tyler described what Robin went through to, to help us do this, I was-
Don't go anywhere yet, Robin.
It was fun. Thank you so much.
You want to wait for a few minutes? I was going to say a few more things.
Gordo has something that he always likes.
Anyways, that just, Robin, thanks for being a trooper on that one. Helps us, helps us make it a little bit more personal, special.
All right, Gordo.
Well, I want to go first, because I want to go last. Yeah, I want to follow that.
I still want to follow this cable, okay. Councilman Mendenhall.
I wrote something. No, I didn't write anything. I thought about writing something, but no, Kier, I mean, I've, I told Kier the other night, I've only been on city council. He's been on city council the whole time I've been on city council. So I've not known city council without Kier. And just the, the professionalism, the detail that you bring to the body and, and the good work you do has just, you know, been awesome to be a part of. The cool thing that you've been for me is when getting involved with city politics that, that, that was corresponding with state politics, and then sometimes through the League of Cities even taken it, you know, taken me to national political conferences or whatever. People knew Kier. I mean, people didn't know the mayor, but they knew Kier.
Doesn't surprise me.
And so when you talked about Spanish Fork, they knew, they knew we had a service member, they knew we had, but they also called you a schoolteacher and, and, and a lieutenant colonel, and now a colonel, and soon to be a general. So, my only, I mean, there's a lot of memories with you and Robin and, and just the good work you've done. But the one that really sticks out to me was, and I know you, you care deeply about a lot of things, but you, I know the men that you, men and women you watch over, how much you've cared for them. The time where you were one of the first people I talked to after Major Mayor Taylor dying in Afghanistan. And the, the military guy that he is, you can see the care that he has for people. And he had that care for, obviously, his family, but his care for me. He, he knew him better than I knew him, but he knew that it was me grieving about that. And so that connection of, of us, I'll never forget. And just seeing the care that you not only had for Jenny and her seven kids, and, and how much they appreciated that, but, but your care for me too, and that process was really neat. So, anyway, we're going to miss you. It's going to be a weird thing without you. And, and we're excited to get you back if, you know, when that, when that happens, when you're, when you have a different, a different label in front of you. So I'm excited for, for that, and I'm excited for your family. But thanks and love your brother for everything done for me.
So, how I met Kier is not from the council. My mother and dad knew Kier. And the care he had for, and the opportunity he had to talk to my stepdad, of course, of concerning war. My dad had served in World War II and was a B-24 bomber. And my mom had a great appreciation for Kier. Were you their home teachers?
I was the bishop.
There's the bishop, okay. I thank you for that, because even till the day my mom, she's still, when you'd mention Kier, still, he was such a good guy. Thank you for your service to our country, above and beyond. I mentioned that you, you care for our country, you serve our country. Thank you for your service to our city. Twelve years, and I used to always laugh because you'd always say, they voted me in again. But all you had to do is walk down the street, and if you run into a fifth grader, they would tell you who their teacher was. My grandson is not happy about you leaving. My grandson's, was one of his students. And when I told him, he, when he mentioned it secretly, I said something to, to Austin, because Austin had declared war on us, on me, because I moved in with him while we were building the home. And, and then Kier says, well, I'll have a talk with him, because I have a thing or two that I know about war. So I'm thinking, I'm going to get in trouble between him and my boy. But thank you for being a friend. I love you. I love you and your family. You're awesome. It's, it's been a treat to watch you go through your, your challenges. I've been a part of that. I hope you consider me a friend. I wish you luck back in Washington and everything you do there, and that you continue to represent our country and our city. I know you will. You do that on a daily basis. And thank you. All right, Gordo.
All right. When I told mayor that I wanted to write a poem, he said, save it to the end of the meeting. And I said, that sounds a little bit like Kier. He'll want to get all the work done before we sort of dote on him a little bit. But here goes my best fifth grade work, buddy. I was looking back at past elections and notes. You won your seat the first time by just eleven total votes. And now twelve years later, it's hard to believe, but your country came calling and you're going to leave. You can talk for hours without taking a drink. I admire you for always saying the words that you think. You've never backed down when someone hit a chord, even those in the basement, the warriors of keyboard. You've traveled everywhere around the globe as a soldier protecting freedoms. Thank you for your service, Colonel Scobes. The BYU Fathers and Sons camp, you invited me and my son, showed me the ropes, and introduced me to Chad Bun. Now in the Kiwanis, a few of us serve, I often think to myself, friends like you, I don't deserve. This deployment is going to put just a little damper on the fact that you upgraded to a really nice camper. I guess this year you'll have to throw in the towel on that trip to southern Utah. You're not headed to Lake Powell. I don't mean to tell you all the cool things you will miss. Hanging in DC with some liberals might be bliss. If I left for a year, my wife would be sobbing, but not your wife. She's a tough one, that, Robin. I'm impressed with her and your family and all their support. This isn't the first time she has had to hold down the fort. I hope the time flies versus going by slow. The next year, I'll save you a seat at the greatest rodeo. Spanish Fork has changed since you sat down in that seat. You once told me you'd serve until mission complete. And even though this, this mission today may be done, your impact for years will bless me and my loved ones. Love you, pal.
Look at that. One for your treasures of trash.
And Art would be so proud.
Well, Kier. Let me tell you, twelve years, almost together. We served four years together on city council, and now is when I became the mayor. So I can say that I know Kier. I know his character. I know his commitment, and I know his love for this city. And I've thoroughly enjoyed serving with you. You know, you, like I say, you don't back down from a fight, and you speak your mind, and I appreciate that, because that's what we need here. We need to be able to stand up, and you do that not only here for the, the city, but you do that for your country. And I appreciate you. My mom really enjoyed you. She was in his ward, and, and so I appreciate what you've done for her, you know, bless her heart. But I'll tell you what, it's, I know I'll run into Kier because I went to Arizona to watch a football game, and who do I run into? I can't get away from him. He's there. So that was, that was fun. That was fun to run into you down there. So, you know, following those BYU Cougars, that was great. So I know you follow them there. That was fun. That was fun to run into you down there. So, you know, following those BYU Cougars, that was great. So I know you follow them there. Uh, I'll probably be back in Washington, uh, bef- before the end of this year, so I'll look you up and we'll go get a burger. But thank you for the years. Thank you for the friendship, and I do love you, brother. I really do. I want you to know that. Thanks, Kier. Alright, Robin, go home. I wanted to do all this at the first, but Seth, no, said no, so.
Seth wants to say something.
Oh, Seth, you wanna say something? Oh, wait a minute, Robin, sorry.
You don't need to say for this. This won't, no, you, go home. I mean, I, I said that with love. Go home. You don't need to wait around for this. Kier and I were chatting the other day, and, and I think it's, uh, it, it's a fun memory to think back to his first real council meeting. We had a, a work session. That particular year, we actually stayed in Spanish Fork, and it, it didn't serve the council really well. One of the members got called into a state presidency, so we need to stay in town and.
Well, tell them what the really.
But, uh, Kier and I are, i- in the room were some of the, the people that didn't grow up in Spanish Fork. And, and in that particular meeting, we were unveiling a year, year and a half worth of work on a, a brand and logos and some pretty exciting changes. We were really super excited as staff to unveil this look and feel and we take this group of, uh, fine, upstanding Spanish Fork through and through council members, minus Kier and I, uh, not on the council, but the, it, it, to a bay and, and there's this truck, and we're gonna, this is how we wanna decorate or paint and show all of our trucks. And I'm just giddy, 'cause it's just cool. And Kier's right next to me, and he says something really fast, that's really cool, and then there's this stodgy old other council members who will remain nameless. It's green. And Kier, Kier is, you know, brand new freshman council member. What's wrong with that? Looks really good. It's green! And we were just like scratching our heads. Oh, it matches the logo. It matches the look and feel. It's the color of the mountains. No, it's green. And we, and we just all of a sudden became true experts, if you will, in color matters.
So what about the snowballs that were thrown at the truck?
I don't know anything about snowball.
There was a couple that threw the snowballs at the truck. Oh, yeah.
You only saw one green truck running around town. I think we actually still has, it's still running around town, and as long as I'm here, I think we're gonna keep that green truck running around town, and it's gonna drive up and down a few streets. I won't name ones, 'cause that would identify too much. Anyways, that, Kier and I commiserated about that, just kinda not being from Spanish Fork, but what's really interesting about it is even though he and I aren't from Spanish Fork, we, we've come to really appreciate and embrace, you know, that color matters. Uh, but that was a fun, that's a fun memory that Kier and I shared, just both kinda being new and naive.
It's a good thing we converted you.
Yeah. So anyways, a fun memory to share with Kier. Uh, uh, just from the staff's perspect- perspective, we, we've loved and appreciated you. Uh, always having great questions and having, uh, great dialogue with us and, uh, wanting to know the why behind things and understand how the city functions, and it's a wonderful thing for us to work with council members as you are, that care about the community and, and I, I'll take maybe something about Kier a step further. He talked about living in town will round up to twenty years. Um, but in his time living in ta- in town for twenty years and take about twelve of those on city council in his service that he mentioned, but it doesn't stop there, right? He has a few years that he served as a bishop in his local, uh, Latter Day Saint ward. A few of those years, he was deployed overseas, and I'm not sure, Robin, I, I, it may be all nineteen of the nineteen years you've lived in town that Kier's been involved in some level of service in the community, save a few months here or there. Um, and that's a really neat characteristic about you, Kier, that, that if we can, if we could take bits and pieces of people, that's something that, that we need to take, and we all need to have. Just that desire to serve and not, well, the action of serving, because that's what you've done. And, and in twenty years, you know, like, we could count months on one hand, probably, where you haven't been actively involved in serving outside of yourself. So thank you for that example to the community, and, and, uh, that's a legacy that I think we'll live on, uh, in, you know, forever about who and how you are. So thank you.
Great. Now you can go home, Robin.
Oh, you know what, Robin, just.
Hurry, get out the door. Hurry, get, get, get.
Just kidding.
Alright, I entertain a motion going to RDA.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Were there consent items in?
No, we didn't find any. New business.
Budget. This is, the same document was in the public hearing and everything to do with it. Uh, it's brown for this one. If you'd like to look at that, it's the RDA. It has a, a budget for this year of a million nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Um, there are a couple of active areas that are still, uh, and there's the possibility of maybe in the, within the next year to creating a couple of new areas. Uh, but we'll bring those to you as they come up, so.
Great.
So I have, not, not a public hearing, just to adopt the budget.
Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve budget fiscal year 2022.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I entertain a motion to go out of RDA.
Motion to go out of RDA.
Motion to go into LBA. Second.
Got a motion to go out by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to go into LBA by Councilman Mendenhall. A second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, public hearing.
Motion to, uh, I move we go into public hearing for the amended revision LBA budget fiscal year 2021.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in a public hearing.
Okay, with one of the hats you get to wear is an LBA hat, like the RDA hat. It's a special revenue fund, and state audit requires us to have our separate budget, like the RDA. And this, uh, public hearing that you have right now is, um, the LBA was created in February, and we issued debt, and so there is some debt and expenses that the library's starting to be built. The library, or the last two years have been budgeted in a capital projects fund. And with the LBA now being established, we're moving all of, uh, the activity having to do with the library into the LBA. And to do that, it, it requires us to create a budget for 2021, and that's why we're having the public hearing right now, is to create, uh, the budget for 2021 and to adopt it. And inside that budget, it has five million dollars as far as the, the bond proceeds that we're spending in the construction right now. Uh, there isn't any debt service yet. That's in the next year's budget as the debt service starts, so this is a public hearing to have any input.
Anyone in the public that would like to come up and address this item?
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're out of public hearing.
Question. Hashtag numb. N-U-M.
Number. It's an error. It's a formula error.
I'm just so detail oriented.
Are, are you hashtagging? Is that what you're doing?
Ken's hashtagging. I just.
You hashtagging?
What that is, it's a spreadsheet, and it goes into our accounting software and looks for account number, and there's not, that account number hasn't been fully created yet, so I was saying, I don't know what that number is, so.
There you go. Uh, new business. Fiscal year 2021 LBA budget final revision. Yeah, we went out of public hearing.
Go ahead and approve.
We need to approve the amended revision in LBA.
Okay, uh.
I'll go ahead and move to approve amended revision LBA budget fiscal year 2021.
Second.
Got a motion by council member Beck. It's second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, now we, now new business.
One more color.
Good thing I'm colorblind.
These are all, these are backwards on my agenda. You gave us this, and we just approved this.
Now you're going to approve the twenty-two one.
I think we just, didn't you just say twenty-two?
No.
She said twenty-one.
Okay.
We did a public hearing.
Did a public hearing on twenty-one and.
So last meeting, you had a public hearing on twenty-two, so that part's already over. And this is just adopting, if you can see, that, uh, spending the rest of the bond money in the next, uh, year, as far as we can get through, and continue to, uh, have construction, and also you'll see that there's interest and principle on this budget, 'cause those payments will start happening for that, so. We've already had the public hearing, so if there's any other questions on FY twenty-two's budget of the LBA, you can ask those questions now.
What's our interest rate again?
Uh, we issued three, one point six something. They're all right there, so.
That's awesome. So are we doing B? Fiscal year 2021 LBA budget final revision?
No, we're doing C.
We're gonna do C. Final year twenty-two.
On line, they were backwards. That's why I was saying.
Alright, I entertain a motion to the 2022 LBA budget.
Motion to approve fiscal year 2022 LBA, LBA budget.
A motion by Councilman Argal.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to go back into city council?
Second.
Alright, we got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Discussion. There's no discussion?
We have a handful of items, and, uh, we'll, we'll move through them as quickly as we can, but
Sure.
we're not gonna meet again between now and, we're only gonna meet one more time, uh, between now and August about city business. So there's a couple of timely issues that we need some feedback on, and some direction from you, so let's see. I don't remember what's first, but we'll talk about code enforcement. So Vaughn, this is something that we've been working on quite a bit. Vaughn and, um, Dave, a handful of offi- or police, our folks from our public safety department. So Vaughn, you're gonna talk about code enforcement and just wanna general, uh, some general thoughts from you and, and general directions as we kind of narrow in on, on some possible changes we're, or some proposed changes we're considering. And then some, some transportation issues. There's a lot of transportation things that, that need to happen uh, in order to approve our network of roads, but some of them become kind of interesting changes and, and we wanna get some feedback from you before we go too much further in, in how they're going. And then we'd like to talk a little bit about water. That's not specifically on the agenda. We're looking for uh, you to take action, but we, I, we'd like to get a little bit of direction from you on some water things. Uh, and then we'll, we'll wrap it up, um, with some discussion on SFCN and the feasibility study, which you got some detail on last council meeting. So with that, we'll, we'll be done in fifty minutes for sure.
We can't go past midnight, though.
That's right. Real quick.
I don't think we put a date. We just put after the meeting. Real quick on the code enforcement issues, um, we've had, as Seth mentioned, we had a kind of a team of community development, police, a legal department, admin, building department, um, have all been meeting to look at how we can improve code enforcement outcomes in the city. And one of the things we've come up with, and it was recommended by, um, Scott Gardner, is that we do a, a tiered, uh, fine approach, so that with, they start out with a five hundred dollar fine for a violation. It could be nuisance, it could be weeds and junk, it could be a number of different things, but then if they cure that violation in ten days, it, it drops all the way down to a hundred. So they have, they have this stick, but then they also have a carrot that they can shoot for, and so, and then it reduces, on a second violation, it goes from five hundred to a three hundred, is, is, they can only save two hundred dollars, and if it's a third violation, they don't get to save any money at all. So with that tiered approach, I, we're proposing some amendments to the ordinances to, to ha- put that in there, and then also to make that available to more different types of, uh, of violations. We've had administrative processes that, in the city, but only in a few different areas of our code, and we've, we've, the recommendation we're making is to apply them to other areas as well that make sense, like zoning violations, nuisance, weeds and junk, um, building, building violations and so on, so you'll see that coming forward in a, in a few weeks. Any questions about that?
Great.
Okay, we, could you go next? I we got a grant through MAG to build a tunnel under US six, and UDOT said that they would take it over for us. First thing they did is doubled the cost so that we couldn't afford it. And so we started talking about it, and we want to kinda leave that project and instead connect all these trails that we have in this area. We can, we'll trail down here and connect it, but there's also the kind of more of a long-term issue, and that is this, this intersection might break down. And so we just want to punt on this whole project for a couple of years and bring it up later, once we've looked at it a lot more. But we don't wanna lose the one point seven million dollars that MAG has granted us. And so there is another project on Center Street, close to where our future interchange is going to be, and that's in conjunction with the high school, and that's a, a big roundabout right there. We feel like with the students, at least initially, but maybe ongoing, there'll, there'll be more accidents because of the roundabout, but there'll be very minor accidents, and maybe it's a good place to teach how to use roundabouts in general. And, and so with, if this was a big five lane, five lane, five lane, three lane, signalized intersection, uh, there would be a lot more injury accidents, possibly even a death accident, because you're coming off the freeway eventually. And so, um, we feel like this is the right decision. Talked to the school district, they agreed and agreed to put five hundred thousand dollars towards this intersection and the fourth west intersection, which will need a signal. Um, this is a lot more than five hundred thousand dollars, though, and so what we would propose is take this one point seven million dollars, go to MAG and say, let's move it over here. Does anyone have any problems with that?
So the, the actual school will be there, though, not the football field, right?
Yeah, so the school's being built right here. There's a lot of parking here and a, a bit of parking there. And so this becomes a pretty significant intersection. This will be a five lane, uh, arterial going all the way down past the sports park to Main Street. Uh, this is five lanes coming in. This will be five lanes going to the new interchange. This would be a very critical intersection, so.
Initially, when we approved the under highway six tunnel, kids, well, they still do walk there, but, uh, is it next year? Those kids will now go to Mapleton Junior? Is that right? I mean, so technically, you're really putting that in for just residents if you were to install that tunnel now, right?
Yeah, where the, the school district made this the boundary, so none of these people will go to this school. So it took away a lot of impetus for it.
It do- it does join our trail there, though.
It does connect the trail.
Does connect the trail.
Take you down to Costco or about.
Okay.
But it's expensive to be able to do that now, for children's safety.
And I think it'd be better over here, the new roundabout on, by the high school there.
Our fourth, that was the fourth north roundabout that gets people on the other side now. I mean, that's a good trail to get people down, downtown, and really, when we're telling kids to do it, you can go down under fourth north, come back up the trail to Center Street, if you wanted to get to that gas station at the top of Center, and stay on a trail and doing it. You know, come past your old, on a trail underneath highway six and back up the gas station.
Yeah, you get a lot more exercise that way.
I guess if you wanna stay active and healthy, you go that way.
Definitely would do that.
The fourteen-thirty east roundabout, I mean, that's just, how long are you gonna be able to run? I didn't, used to live there, but you probably agree with.
The issue we have here, there's a lot of issues here. One is, we want to connect all the trails, but if this is in the future, which I'm not ready to recommend yet, then you would build the trail connection a lot differently than if it was something else. And so, it needs to be investigated a lot. You know, one thought is, push it over here into that area and not have to buy a house. You know, there's a lot of, lots moving parts here, so I think we should wait on that decision.
I think this is a good spot, especially when we get that on-off ramp off I- fifteen right there. That'll be good.
Okay. Right now, we budget for the full cost of this. This would be a one-point-seven million dollar infusion into the budget, which would be really nice, if it could work. Okay, and then, what we, we've gotten a lot of money, and we've gotten a lot of comments about how much money we've gotten from MAG. And so, we've talked about it, and what we'd like to do is only apply for one project. And that will be our, you know, our, would just say, hey, we're only gonna apply for one project this year, but this is the one we think would be good.
That's like saying, we're sorry for winning state.
This is a big project.
It's true, you guys kept applying, so.
Yeah. I think, I think if we did this, got it, it'd be a big win, and the next time, we could say, hey, we only applied for one last time, and that's kind of psychologically, we're trying to figure this.
Like, when you say people have said things, who's, like?
The other cities, and MAG, and UDOT.
If MAG says something, but other cities.
Well, and UDOT, UDOT's gotten a little vocal.
They're obviously investing in a good cause, so.
We agree. So, we got this project, and that's being built right now, and MAG's paying a lot of that. We, when we applied for this and got it, we said there would be three phases. And since then, this development has occurred. And so, our thoughts are, what if we go back to MAG and say, we feel like this will be done by developers, we can get that done by developers, this would never be done by developers, so give us phase two, and this would be our application this year. And this is a big one, this is very expensive. I mean, you have a signal here, you have five lanes going in here, you have the roundabout, so.
You said, apply for that one this year?
And that'd be our one project, yeah.
That's huge.
That's like, top quadrant important?
Yeah. And, and maybe even add this connection to Seventeen Hundred East, so that you can come out there and go. So, that's kind of our thoughts.
And shut the traffic down on one-fifty.
This will positively impact Center Street and highway-six, just giving the traffic on the highway-six faster.
That whole, that, this whole area.
So, that helps a lot of things. So, we really want to get this project, and so we say, this is our only one, hopefully we get the vote, so we can get it. Okay. The last thing, just really quick, is we've been pressuring UDOT a lot to get two left-turn lanes coming from Third South onto Main Street, and they finally agreed to do it. They said they're gonna give us a quarter million dollars to do it. And we figured out a way to do it, but it would not give us the two lefts here. But we think that's fine. Right now, it doesn't warrant it. We're, you need three-hundred peak trips, and we're only at two-hundred. So, and we think with a lot of the changes that we're proposing, we may never need it. And so, it looks like we'll probably get these dual lefts from Third South on, and then, you'd have only a single coming here. But we think that actually increases the phasing time here, because this clears quicker, and we think it'll work great. But that's just, that's coming.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
This is our Keep Nick Looking Cool campaign, is what I call it. We're empowering Nick. So, right now, there's a lot of buzz about the water situation in Utah, and, and we're not doing too bad. And we already talked about that. We're, things are going pretty well here. But if we kind of thumb our nose at conservation, which we're not, my heavens, we've been doing it for years and years. But if we don't kind of try to ratchet things up, the fear is not being a team player with the rest of the state, and we want to do that. And so, we've, we've kind of talked about how we can, we can still conserve water even more. And it's, it's interesting, we already pretty much meet the state twenty-thirty goal. This is the goal that they want the whole state to be at in twenty-thirty, and we're there now. And so, I think that's a huge talking point that we want to get out there. But we, we, we still think we can do more. And, and so, here's some of the ideas that we came up with, is most people get paid twice a month, and so, we thought, maybe we could kind of encourage residents to skip a watering cycle every payday. So, you'll save some green, and you'll lose some green. And this is kind of our thoughts. But it's kind of easier, whenever you get paid, to, to skip a water, let, let your lawns get a little bit yellow, not, this isn't gonna kill your lawn, it's just gonna lose a little bit of yellow. The next thing that we talked about is, we, we don't believe in water restrictions, restricting days. We, we feel like that does not do conservation. It does help a lot of cities. If, if your system is underdesigned, and you, your reservoirs are low, it's really hard to supply water to the whole city all at once. And so, when you make the city stagger days, then you can supply half the city at once, one day, and then the other half another day. And so, it works really well for systems that are underdesigned for lower supply, if that makes sense. But we don't have that problem. And, and so, the reason why we don't want to do this is, if, if I tell you, you can only water two or three days a week, you water all day that day, and you use a lot more water than you need to, and, and really don't conserve water. You, you never miss a restricted day. But if, if we leave it open, and we say, hey, look, just try to skip it once in a while, skip it every payday, but you can water the next day, and there's no restrictions on that, then people consciously conserve water. And, and, and we found that to be true. And, and that's why we're, we have such a low water use in our city. And so, I, I'm not criticizing water restrictions in other cities. I think they have a role, especially if your supply is down, and your system can't deliver. But we, we don't think it's wise for conserving water. We think some of these other methods that we're proposing would do better that way, so.
With the governor's statement, is that, would there be a need to let our senate or representatives know why we are thinking that? Sort of, basically, this short presentation to let them know, we're, we're not discrediting what the governor's asking, but here's why it works for us, and here's that, as you just said. Would there be a need, or could we do that, to, to explain to them, so that it, you know, it doesn't look as though we are thumbing our nose at the governor's requests, I guess, so to speak?
Yeah, I don't think he's specifically requested us to do restrictions. He's, he's implemented some restrictions on, on the state facilities. But one of the things that he's dealing with, with state facilities, is they can't do some of these other things that we're doing, because we meter, and a lot of, a lot of facilities aren't metered. Most cities don't have meters on their outdoor water. So, I think he's asked us to have some sort of a plan like this, and this, this is pretty comprehensive. This is pretty good. I think it'll meet the requirements. Okay, so, one of the things that we do do that most cities can't do. Do you understand?
We do, do.
Is, we have tiered rates. Now, tiered rates for pressurized irrigation, the state requires tiered rates for drinking water, right? Because everyone has meters under, they don't require tiered rates for outdoor water. And the reason is, is it's impossible if you don't have meters. But we do have tiered rates, even though it's not required for pressurized irrigation. And so, one of the things that we're proposing is, let's lower the threshold on the tier. And so, to encourage people to use less water, is we just lower it for this season from twenty-five thousand to twenty thousand gallons, before you jump to the next tier. And then, raise the tier rate from ninety-seven cents to a dollar twelve. That is a good message, I think, and it should help encourage conservation. In fact, I believe it's the only thing that encourages conservation, is to charge for what you use. And that's why, until metering becomes the mandate, it's gonna be hard to conserve water. And, you know, overall, in this state, very comprehensively. So, anyway, that's.
Chris, on that, though, you said we're really doing fairly, well, really well. So, why penalize our residents by charging them more? Mayor, did you slam your hand down?
I made that same point earlier today.
Wow. Great minds think alike. I would like to have an answer then, don't just give it to you.
Since the last twenty years, we've been conservating and been smart about water. Now, we want to penalize our people for doing it.
And now, we're just gonna raise our rates, and then take that money and put it where? Like, in the general fund? Because we just, huh? This needs to be a broader discussion, possibly, since this was under discussion.
So.
Yeah, I don't, I don't love it.
So.
We heard it from the mayor, but we just got that.
Now, we're listening. We did, we did hear about ducks today, so ducks are good, I guess.
Do they know?
So, it's a good, it's a good question, Stacy. This definitely isn't being done to increase revenues. In fact, it doesn't increase revenues much at all.
I'm sure it doesn't, but.
These rates are, these rates are actually low, still low. And so.
I think we could just educate the, the residents, continue on that path, instead of raise their rates.
It's like, a home that you have, it only raises a few bucks for like, a house like mine on a third acre. So, it's, it's not penalizing, but it is a message that you could get out. We are doubling the increase of the first tier. That, that encourages people to conserve, but in the end, they, they might pay three or four extra dollars. So, if they didn't change their, and so, it's not, it gives you a good talking point, but it doesn't really hurt them that much financially, is, I guess.
Just a little bit.
A little bit.
Then they can't go by their swag.
When, when, when we talk about, if, when, if we talk about this on a more detailed basis, I think it's important, I mean, Marlo gave that great presentation a couple of weeks ago. But we're, our city's doubled in size since we decided to lead out on water, not only pressurized irrigation system, but meter it from the beginning. And that's twenty years ago now, and we were less than twenty thousand people. There's, there's a whole new city of people living here that just came in when that decision was already made. Thankfully, I mean, I don't know what the number would be now, but years ago, it was saving fifty-something million to our city to make that decision. It was wide, you know, it was criticized pretty good in some circles. But, but now, it's, you know, probably that double again. It's probably a hundred million that it saved us in, you know, money that, that equals water. So, when we have that discussion of anything that has to do with tweaking that rate at all, it should be to help educate our relatively new residents, they're twenty years here, that, that, hey, this decision was made, and it was made in states catching up to the decision that we made twenty years ago.
Do, yeah. So, so I'm thinking alongs of what the mayor's saying. Do, do they know, I mean, we're doing the Rancho meters? Racio. We're, we're, yeah, we're, the water department is continually fixing. We've got our loss of water down to, like, in the twelve percent versus twenty-five. And like the mayor says, we, we've been doing all this stuff. We're metering and continue, and, yeah, we've put in all these things to continue this process. And then, and I guess, do they know that Spanish Fork has done all this and doing all this, and that continues regardless of what's happened in the last twenty years, and since two thousand and one? So, they're saying that's when this drought supposedly started. And, and I get this, because they see dollar, and they see figure, and if we do that, then that's, but I kind of agree also, that, we've been trying to conserve why other cities, their PI is unlimited, till it's gone, and then they have to shut it off, but.
So, I'm here and put this on the back shelf. Is that kind of?
I think so.
All right, we can do that.
Thank you. I think somebody agrees with me.
This is actually, everything you said is pretty easy to talk this state through. Nick's just getting a lot of pushback. Why don't we have restrictions in Spanish Fork? Were we thumbing our nose, you know? And so, we want Nick to be able to, to really tell these residents, give the, yeah, we are team players, we are conserving, there's a big stage here.
And I think it's pretty cool to see, some of the ag fields that are in city limits are on, are on pressurized irrigation. You can see, you can see places on the east side that are sprinkled, that were never sprinkled before. They were flood irrigated in ditches, and now they're sprinkled. And, man, we ought to be highlighting. God, we're, we have a pressurized irrigation system, where still these acres of farm fields that are in Spanish Fork get to be sprinkled and, and, and hook up to our PI system. Instead of flood irrigation, that's a lot, a lot of water. I mean, if you take the state's water usage, ninety percent of it is flood irrigation, only ten percent's, you know, residential and commercial uses. And so, even when we're conserving in our residential areas and commercial uses, it's only affecting ten percent of the water use in the state.
That's a really good talking point that we should, Nick, we should add that, because there's also a large part that's doing drip irrigation. And so, when you, when you sprinkle instead of flood irrigate, you save more than half the water. But the drip, it's seventy-five percent. And, and we have a lot of that going on, and we, we should probably really get that message out.
And we should let them know that, you know, we, you know, we understand we're in a drought. And so, let's, let's do our part and conserve and do that. But I don't want to penalize us for being good stewards of our water for the past twenty years, you know? We've done well, and so, let's, let's continue to do what, you know, and, and like I say, we can all cut back. I like the idea. Let's miss a pay, every paycheck, let's cut back a little bit.
Well, we don't want to miss your paycheck.
I never get a paycheck. So, I'm never, I'm never gonna turn my water on.
Could we have SFCN do a commercial and get that on Spanish Fork seventeen, and on our social media outlets? Like, maybe some just little mini snippets of different educational tools?
I think the real, only the real, the only real education we could do probably was effectively Studio Chat.
All right.
I was gonna suggest Chris go on Studio Chat.
I mean, Marlo, because she's the expert on Studio Chat.
Oh, yes. Get around there, you'll be great.
Here's a prime example. I could know a person that lives in Lehigh, he said, or not Lehigh, Linden, he says, yeah, we have pressurized, you know, it's ten dollars. He said, or not Lehigh, Linden, he says, yeah, we have pressurized, you know, it's ten dollars. I pay ten dollars a month and I can water as much as I want, cause it's not metered. You know, and I do water as much. And I said, that's why you guys are running out of water. Exactly.
The other thing that the mayor brought up, which I think is really key is when a developer comes in and he builds a house in Spanish Fork, we make them give us water. And when he gives us water, we say, that water, we want to know how much water that will provide us in a drought year, in a year like what we have now. And we say, you give us enough water that in a drought year when we care, in a, in a wet year, we, we have so, we have water coming out of our ears, right? We don't need water in a wet year, but in a dry year, how much water will that give us? And uh, that's how we value it. So when we have these drought years, that's the water we've collected and that's why we're do- so that, that's a huge talking point that the mayor just pointed out. And, and because we've done that, we're, we're fine right now.
And it is an education of people think when we're growing and you grow a, you, you, a farm field turns into a new subdivision. Well, where do they get the water? How do they get the water? We actually lose, you, you're using less water when you, when those homes are built than that farm field was used. Flood irrigate that farm field and so, you know, and especially when we're asking, when we're getting water turned into us too for it, we're gaining more shares for those people who use.
Yeah, you don't, you don't water where your house footprint is or your driveway or, you know, your backyard tennis courts or whatever you have, you know? No, you don't. Okay.
Nice, good.
Um, the next thing is water restrictions and this is really, maybe I'll skip four and, and, and talk about it with six, but each person in the city is a stakeholder. Uh, okay. Actually, you did it right. Okay, so the, in Spanish Fork, we have this wind fan. All night long, you have these heavy gale force winds blowing in, in about a third or more of the city. And if you water into the wind like that, it evaporates the, the water, the sprinkled water six times faster than the sun if you water in the middle of the day. And so what we're worried about is public shaming of, oh, I, I went by this park or this school, Sierra Park or Sierra Bonita, and they were watering in the middle of the day. That city is really bad and Nick gets that and gets beat up over it. When really that's a lot more conservative than the people out there that are watering in the middle of the night. And so there's, there's a lot of issues here that we're trying to get the message out. And so one of the things that, that we, we want to explain that and also say, hey, if you see something that's concerning to you, then go talk to that person or that school or that city or whatever and, and, and let's solve it together. Let's not, let's not try to have a big public shaming uh, situation on, on the internet. And so we, we really want to push that, hey, this isn't about public shaming. This is about working together. And if you see something concerning, let's, maybe that person doesn't know that, that their, their sprinkler head is broke. They're at work every day when that comes on. You know, let's just go talk to them and help them out. Don't take a picture of it, put it on Facebook and create an enemy. Let's, let's, let's just work together. And so we want that to be a big message. Um, and then, then the last thing is, is, you know, the governor encourages us to pray for rain. We, we love that. We think that's, that's a great message. And so um, let's, let's keep, let's reverberate that message. Any questions about any of this? This is kind of what we would say is our drought response type thing, minus, minus the tiered thing.
Thank you, Chris.
But maybe we'll talk about the tiers. We have tiers. How many cities have tiers?
Yeah.
Right?
None, cause they don't have meters.
They're fifteen minutes up.
Thanks Chris and, and uh, Nick. We, we didn't, I don't think we touched on the parks and recreation side of this, the parks. To be, this idea of voluntary, we, we are not saying there's a restriction and it's important that we always talk about what we have done, just like you said, to be where we are. We're in a great place, but we aren't on an island. We're all on this big watership together and so what can we do? This skip a watering every couple of weeks idea is, is just a voluntary thing. And uh, if I stop, if I skip one watering at my house, it's probably three thousand gallons. And, and you multiply that by twelve thousand households twice in a month. I mean, that's a significant amount of water that we can save, so. And that, and that might make your yard a little bit green-yellow. Uh, it won't make it necessarily yellow-green, but that might make it a little green-yellow and, and that's okay. We're gonna, we proposed doing some similar things and Dale's had a little bit of time with his people to think about and talk about this. And they're gonna talk about a little bit more, but, but they're gonna look at their different parks and, and recommend some different spaces and areas where they can cut back on watering just the same. There are some places in our parks however, that we can't change the watering. Those specific playing surfaces need to be watered. The, the, the grass has to stay a certain quality so that it can be played on and it receives a lot of abuse uh, from the playing surface, being a playing surface. So there are some spaces where we won't change the watering schedule, but we will in other places. And, and overall that'll, that'll uh, serve and conserve what we're trying to do. Great feedback on the prices and we can adjust there. All right, let's talk SFCN. I sent out a, a note to you uh, a week and a half ago after our last council meeting work session and looking for some follow-up from you. Brian has been a trooper. He's been here all night.
I'm just thinking, you know, if Mrs. Cruz gets offense after sitting here for three hours.
Yeah, but you're on the payroll, so it didn't matter.
We'll give you a France, Brian.
We'll give you a France. So anyways, we're looking for some thoughts and direction from you. We are not making any specific decisions, however, we, we need to keep progressing towards some kind of decision, uh, po- a possible decision here or do we put the project on hold? And the concept is simply uh, how do we move for, or do we move forward uh, hiring an architect to, to begin a, a design process? And if we do that, we would look at doing uh, this project through some sort of bond, which would be an enterprise revenue, uh, enterprise fund revenue bond that the, uh, the utility would pay for itself. There are, there are funding mechanisms already in the rate structure that can, can handle this. So it wouldn't be a burden uh, to the rate, wouldn't, I, I wouldn't expect it to, to cause any adjustment to our rates uh, in, in SFCN so we can continue to do what we do. But I'm looking for some, we're looking for some direction from you as we, we move forward.
I, I won't apologize because I read that and it seems like the last two weeks, all of this stuff was coming in on my desk and people calling me about other things and I apologize not responding, but what you said just then, I, that, I, I like it being on that far, that west side of that corner.
This one here?
Yep.
Okay.
And I like the way you.
Outlined it.
If he can pay for it out of his wallet, that's great.
Right.
I like that too. If, if Brian can pay for it, we'll give it to him.
I'm sensing some nuance to what you're saying, but I'm, I'm not gonna explore that deeper.
Just trying to let Brian know that of all the kids, he pays for himself, right? It's like some of the other kids are thirty-five and still live in our basement. Chris? You know what I'm saying? Brian pays for himself.
Wow, don't, wow.
Checkout was at eighteen, he moved out.
Ask Brian how much he owes me.
Wow, and stop it, stop it. It's like a little o'clock at night. We don't have time for this.
We don't want our siblings to be fighting.
Now, kids.
I have a poem. I have a poem.
That was good.
TikTok, the game is locked.
I like the west side too. Uh, yeah, I like that presentation and I think we probably ought to move forward. You know, cause we're growing and we need that, you know, the space. Yep, I like it over there.
Okay, we will.
Roundabout is.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll keep working on the roundabout concept as well. Um, I don't think that is the final design by any means, but we'll, we'll keep working on that too, but. Okay, we uh, we'll begin the process of, of hiring an architect. We'll put out an RFP for that. Um, and it, it'll be a, a time before we're ready to build. I mean, we, they, they outlined a timeframe. I think it was a little bit aggressive in the meeting that they, they sent us. But um, that being said, we, we still get a sense of what it can be, so.
Can, I, I, and I don't know if I might have made this comment back when we first, he approached this uh, with the storage retaining, so, and I'm, I'm speaking from previous employment. With, with all the equipment, cards and technology and the technology is advancing, with that storage, I hope we keep that. So a tendency, I come from a company where you tend to, because we had that technology, we keep that technology and we keep all the cars, we keep it on the shelf and we kept tons of it. And it sat there for years and years until finally somebody would say, hey, this is gone.
Threw it away.
Yeah, don't, as that, as we advance in technology, don't keep that, don't waste that space in forgone technology and stuff like that. And I know you have to keep some of it around because it stays there, but that takes up a lot of space when you move technologies and move to something new and better and then you keep it on the shelf cause you think someday I'll use it, but um, a new building is nice and storage is nice, but we don't want, we want to utilize that to its, to its fullest.
Great advice. We can, we can certainly be pack rats from time to time and, and uh, technology. I, I still have a VCR. I have one more reason for the VCR and as soon as I'm done with that project, the VCR is gone.
Keep that, cause all the John Wayne tapes are BHS.
Okay, you got that?
Yeah, Brian, you got what you need?
That's the direction we need.
Okay, Gordo.
I think Kier should do it.
Kier.
We have closed session?
Yes.
Oh.
Sweet.
I move we.
We don't know what to do, Brandon.
I move we go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation, land transaction and personnel actions.
Got a motion.
Second.
By Councilman Kier, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for everyone that stayed for this marathon council meeting.
It's over.
I'd left at some point, I'm sure.
And I've seen Dave Euler's name on it four different times when he goes back in.
Twenty hour meeting.
Cause the very first one was so long.